So as business administrator of SAU 21, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the governor's emergency order 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which is authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that A, we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the North Hampton School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary participate in the meeting through dialing the following phone number (646) 876-9923, or webinar ID (963) 76023357, or by clicking on the following website address at sau21.org via the Zoom link. Also by B, providing public notice of necessary information for accessing the meeting. We have previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website at the SAU 21 office at www.sau21.org. C, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting. If there are any problems with access, if anybody does have a problem, please call (603) 926-8992 extension 114, or email deboratute@SAU21.org. And D, adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. So in the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during the meeting shall be done by roll call votes. And now let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. We will now take a roll call. Greg Duffy.
Present and alone.
Tom Von Jess.
Present and alone.
Nermina Peterson.
Present with family.
Martin Tavishian.
Present and alone.
And Aaron Stanton. Looks like Aaron is not present. So we'll now turn the meeting over to Greg Duffy, board chair.
Okay, so we have a short, tight agenda, and I think we're going to kick it off with some guest speakers who are going to take us through some roles and responsibilities. Bill?
Yeah, we have Barrett Christina, the executive director of the New Hampshire School Boards Association, and Will Phillips, who is chief legal counsel and policy...
Director of Policy Services, staff attorney.
Okay.
Close.
I promoted.
You're on point.
Barrett, can we put chief in my name, please? So thanks for being here. Will and Barrett have been just terrific and so supportive of all of our work here in SAU 21, and we really appreciate them, and they're willing to be here to work with you around board roles and responsibilities. So thanks for being here.
Thank you all. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Greg. And thank you to members of the board for inviting NHSBA to participate in this meeting and provide some training relative to some basics, some roles and responsibilities, good governance, best practices, things of that nature. I don't know how much time we have on the agenda. If somebody could just sort of maybe clue me in on that, so I can sort of adjust the presentation.
Good for an hour today.
Good for an hour. Perfect. That's wonderful. And hopefully, I know looking at some of the names and some of the faces, I know some of you have been able to attend some NHSBA trainings previously when we were able to do these in person at our office here in Concord. So I hope you know that my style ideally is to have a conversation with the board. And the more that the board is engaged with Q and A and things of that nature, I think the more effective it will be for everybody. So I hope you have the handout, the roles and responsibilities. I apologize for getting that to everybody a little bit late. We're going to be walking through that a little bit. We're certainly not going to be reading every line on that. But the purpose of our roles and responsibilities training is to sort of walk everybody through what the law says about school board responsibilities and duties and authority, and then compare and contrast that with the superintendent's roles and responsibilities, and see where that middle ground is, what NHSBA would generally consider sort of good governance or best practices. So again, thank you for having us. You know, we tend to make this sort of open and flow through, so if there are questions as we're moving along, just, you know, raise your hand or whatnot, and Will and I can call on you and answer your questions. So the first thing that we want to start off with is there are a lot of roles and responsibilities of school boards, and those have different sources of, they come from different sources of law. There are certainly statutory requirements, Department of Education regulations and rules, and as well as your own local school board policies. And we're going to talk a lot about school board policy tonight, and how that really sets the framework for good school board governance, and helps with, you know, clarifying expectations and responsibilities of the administration, and how that can hopefully you know, lead to positive student outcomes and successful school districts. So if you looked at page two of the of the handout, NHSBA, you know, strongly advocates and primarily advocates that the first basis of good school board governance and good school district governance is that the board's primary responsibility is to set and establish school board policy. And if we look at where the legal authority of that comes, in the middle of page two, we've listed a handful of examples of Department of Education rules. And there's actually a Department of Education rule that speaks to the duties of school boards. So if we look at ED 303, and just for the board members, if you're not familiar with sort of the coding system for the Department of Education, anytime you see ED followed by a series of numbers, you're talking about a Department of Education regulation. And there's one that speaks to the duties of school boards. And as an example, we put a couple of examples in here. The first one, "School Board Shall Adopt Policies Necessary and Desirable to Control and Effectuate Recruitment, Employment, Evaluation, Dismissal of Teachers." So basically, your employment-related policies. State Board of Education telling you, you have to have employment-related policies. And then B, "Adopt Policies Necessary and Desirable to Control and Effectuate the Purchase of Equipment, Supplies, and Services," financial-related policies. And a couple other examples, a rule about unlawful discrimination, and primarily Department of Education rule, excuse me, 306.04A. That's the minimum standard. 306 are the minimum standards for public education. Basically, everything that a school district has to offer and provide students to be approved by the state of New Hampshire. And those minimum standards in their totality are, I don't know, 80, 90, 100 pages long. But there's a section of school board responsibilities in there, and we didn't list them all out just in the interest of saving trees. But there are 26 policies within those minimum standards alone that are required by law that every school board has to have in place. So when we look at the regulatory scheme about the responsibility of role of school boards, it comes down to policies. It always comes down to policies. Department of Education regs is replete with policy requirements. And also, if we look at, you know, various New Hampshire statutes, jumping over to page three, these are just a handful that have been in the news the last, I don't know, maybe six, eight, 10 years or so. And just as the Department of Education puts policy responsibilities on school boards, the New Hampshire legislature often says, well, is there a policy on this? Should we require school boards to have a policy on this? And some of the obvious examples, bullying, we're all familiar with our district's bullying policy, concussions and head sport, concussions and head injuries for for school athletics, use of restraints for children that have, you know, behavioral problems or special ed concerns, truancy and absenteeism, criminal background checks, objectionable course material, so on and so forth. So while NHSBA strongly advocates that boards focus primarily on policy, there's a reason for that. One is that the board, is that the law requires many policies from school boards. And second of all, why do we want to adopt policies? Why is policy so important for for school boards? Well, what does policy do? It sets expectations for everybody, right? And who does it set expectations for? Students, staff, visitors, the board in and of itself. I presume you have policies in section B that talk about how requests for right to know law, how minutes are going to operate, authority and responsibility of the board chair, agenda setting, things of that nature. The other reason that we want to focus on policy is that you get to set the rules. You get to determine, you know, how things are going to operate. The school board gets to determine that through its policy, through its policy language. And if something is happening in the district and you're not crazy about it, or you want to revisit it, you have that authority to take a look at your policy and then and then amend that policy as need be. The other reason that you want to have good policies in place is, you know, it's the first line of, as I mentioned, school board governance. It provides expectations and guidance for your administrators. But it's also going to be used if and when, if and when, you know, you need to, you need to call on legal counsel, or defend or justify what you're doing. You know, when Will and I get phone calls from superintendents about some particular issue in their district, what do you think the first question we ask them is? What does your policy say? Or do you have a policy on that? So we talk about school board policy, the first line of good school board governance. And in a couple more, a couple more pages, we will, we'll circle back around to school board policy and see how that plays in with the superintendent's responsibilities and the responsibilities of your other administrators.
Barrett, would you like the slides up at this point?
Um, I mean, Will, I mean, what do you think? I mean, I'm happy just yapping away if you want to see a talking head. If you want to throw the slides up, we can make that work as well, too, Bill.
I guess what I would say is that we skipped over, you know, the initial part about individual board members versus collective action. I mean, we can do it either way. Do you want to, do you want to introduce that part of it?
You talking to me, Will?
Yes.
Sure. All right. In the interest of time, I did, I did skip over page, page, page one of the, of the handout. But I'll go back to that as well, too. I mean, one of the, when we're talking about the collective responsibility of a school board, we talk about the policymaking and the budget responsibilities, and we'll get to some of those in a couple of minutes. But if we read through the first page of the handout, and I probably should have led with this, but it's important for board members to understand that the board only has authority collectively, right? When you're at a meeting, making decisions, adopting policies, setting the budget, making motions, things of that nature. But it's also important to remember that no individual school board member has any explicit authority or explicit power, explicit responsibility unless the board has given that, that, that board member a certain responsibility. And the other thing to, I think, to remember, too, is that while individual board members have no specific authority to act on behalf of the board unless they've been given that responsibility. One of the key phrases when we talk about the difference between governance and management, and where the board's governance roles fall in, is that it's the role of the school board not to run the schools, per se, but to make sure that the schools are run well. And I think that's an important aspect for, for school boards to understand. And how we ensure that they're running well, again, brings in the policies we talked about, the budget responsibilities we'll talk about, the evaluation of the superintendent that we'll talk about. So just a couple points before we move on, just remember that no individual board member has any authority to act on behalf of the board. That comes into play when you're dealing with the public or answering inquiries or questions from, from parents or constituents. And it's also important to remember that the role of the board, not just as a best practice and a good governance practice, but through the statutory and regulatory makeup, puts the hands and the power of the school board to make sure that not to do the opera, not to do the day-to-day operations and not to be running the schools, but to make sure that your administrators are carrying out your directives, carrying out your, your policies, and making sure that, that the schools are run well by what your administrators and your staff are doing. Will, did you want to add anything to that, or think that covered it?
No, I, you know, I think that, you know, that, that lays it, lays it out. And just, you know, to underscore the individual authority, when, when you're elected to a school board, what you're elected to do is to sit at the board table, participate in the formal discussion or debate, what deliberations, and then to vote on the actions. But, but once the meeting's over, your, your board member authority, that is your board member hat, really has no, you know, no significance. And it, and it's important, you know, many board members, and I assume many of you are parents of students still in the district, and as a board member, you know, outside the meeting, you're, you're not the board member, you're the parent. And you try to make sure that your interactions, constituents will talk to you as a board member, and to some extent, that's, that's appropriate. They expect that. You expected that when you, you ran. But you can't speak on behalf of the board. You can be, you know, be a conduit. You know, generally, that information is going to go to the chair or to the superintendent. But you can't really speak on behalf of the board because you weren't designated the board spokesperson. So you just have to be mindful in your different interactions with people, you know, what hat are you wearing? And generally, outside of that board meeting, you're going to be wearing your parent hat, or you're going to be wearing your taxpayer hat, or your neighbor hat. And yes, you have insight on what, what are the better conduits to get to the appropriate channel. But just bringing that, that point up. So now, do you want to switch back to dropping off policy and picking up?
Sure.
Okay, so I'm picking up budget, right?
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, Will.
Yeah, I just wanted to segue. I just thought that was something that I know we were trying to move fast here. So the...
Hey, Will, can I, can I interject? Is this an interactive conversation, or would you like to present and then circle it out?
Go right ahead, Greg.
Yeah, two, two parts. So before that happens, try to, you know, if it's a question that's particular to the thing we're talking about, bring it up then, because we want to get through and then entertain your questions. But if they're right on the subject we're talking about, bring it up when you have it. So go ahead.
So it is, and it's, it is on that subject, and it's less of a question as it is a, an agreement with what you just outlined as far as school board responsibilities outside of the school board. And I think a lot of times, we're all aware of that, but the people we're talking to may not be aware of that. They may be still thinking of us as a school board member, not as a parent. So it's incumbent upon the school board members to be very diligent around the types of conversations that we have with our neighbors and friends in the community. So I just want to...
And yeah, if I could, if I could lead into that, Will, give me a second. Greg, thank you for bringing that up. And that's another reason why policy is so important.
Exactly.
You know, when you have those questions or inquiries from your neighbor, or your friends, or your constituents about an issue that's going on in school, you want to know and be familiar with the policy that outlines your chain of command, policy KE, and I believe KEB, that talks about, well, you know, if you get that inquiry from a constituent, you tell that, you know, that parent, well, did you talk to the teacher? Did you talk to the principal? Did you talk to the superintendent? Before you bring it up as a board question. So your, your, your point is, is well taken, Greg. That's exactly what we would recommend. But I also wanted to put another plug in there, and how policy plays into your boardsmanship and your governance of the district.
Thank you. And I don't mean to belabor the point, but, but you just triggered something else when you said chain of command. And I think it's all, I learned this the hard way. So I've been, I've been a member for a while. But chain of command is important because there is a chain of command, and the school board often sits at the end of the chain of command, especially if people are, are fighting against a decision that's made by the principal and the superintendent. So by speaking with the public, you're actually sort of polluting your, your, your neutrality in what could be a final, you know, you could be sitting there as a board member making a final decision there. So chain of command is also, thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah. And in addition to the, actually Barrett made the points that I was going to make in response. You also have, so you've got two different ideas. There's chain of command, which is usually refers to the internal structure. And you probably have two board policies. You have one in your B series and one in your G, G series that talks about, you know, if an employee wants to get a matter to the board's attention, there's an appropriate, you know, path that they follow. And if they follow that path, hopefully, it's resolved at a lower level, and it doesn't have to get to the board. But if you're redirecting, redirecting them back to that, that path, one thing it does is it actually can help the employer, I mean, the employee, because it allows them to maintain the position. Look, and I've followed your chain of command, and I still have this issue. Whereas in a lot of instances, it gets to the board, and if it becomes a legal matter, the first thing the attorney is going to do is, did they exhaust their administrative remedies? Did they follow the path? And so our defense is, hey, you didn't follow the path. But we didn't direct them that way. So you, as board members, can actually be helping them by redirecting them. And if you think it's a serious, you know, a serious matter, then you can ask the administrators to report back to the board. It, you know, they can't give you full information, obviously, in many instances, but they can at least tell you it's being addressed. And, and, you know, just give you the information that you need to know as board members to make sure that the issue that you're concerned about, that you're, you know, it is, is being followed. Anyway, so that was, that was, we just wrapped up the first two sections. And, you know, first was just the introduction, then we're into policy. That's your first responsibility. Your second responsibility is to establish the school district's budget and provide budget oversight. There are various statutes that lay out the, the, you know, the technical budget development process. Every district has its own sort of approach to it. A lot of that has to do with, do you have a budget committee? Are you an SB2 versus a traditional? You know, do you have a strong administrative team that starts that process, you know, in, in spring? As soon as the first budget's over, you're starting to work on the other one. I mean, I know some districts that really don't even think about the budget, you know, well through September. But we, so we're not going, we don't spend a lot of time on that part because it is a statutory process, and you do have your own mechanisms in place. But, you know, the question that often comes up for school board members, individual board members is, well, well, how do we provide oversight in, in, you know, once the budget's passed, how do we provide fiscal oversight? And there are a couple of statutory mechanisms, and then you also have some policy mechanism. But the two biggest statutory mechanisms for budget oversight are manifest approval and approvals for transfers. So, you know, in a sort of overly simplistic view of your, you know, what your budget is, in, if, if you have money in one line, and, you know, so you have $10,000 in your, your soccer ball line, and you have, you know, $5 in your Chromebook line, and you need to spend more on your Chromebooks than your soccer balls this year, you need to, the, you have to transfer the appropriation from soccer balls over to Chromebooks. And each time that the administration needs to do that, there's some, you know, place where the board has a function in, in, in that, you know, in that transfer. And that can either come in a blanket policy that says, you know, the administration can do that for transfers of $5,000 or less, or, you know, districts have different thresholds by which they, they require that. But, but even in those instances, the administration has to report, or, you know, there's some mechanism for reporting the transfer back to the school board. So you're seeing how the administration is implementing the budget that was approved the previous year. The, the second one, and one that's ongoing, you know, every time you're, you're writing checks, is you have a manifest approval process. And that's where you're seeing that the money that's going out is somehow aligning with the budget that you passed, you know, that the budget, the voters passed back in the spring. So those are, those are your, you know, the two key ones. And then, and then the last one, whether it's by policy or specific request of the board, you know, just financial reports, you, you know, you ask for specific financial information, and you, and you review that. That's how you provide the fiscal oversight. So that, that, that's your budget and budgetary oversight. Moving on, any questions on that part of it?
And then Barrett will take it away next.
Great, thanks, Will. Obviously, moving on from the handout, the next primary role and responsibility of the school board, I don't need to spend a lot of time on this, is you hire a superintendent, right? And this is obviously the, the one thing you want to do as infrequently as possible. And I know fortunately, in SAU 21, you've been, been fortunate to have pretty good stability at the superintendent level, the last, the last , since I've been an NHSBA anyway. But more importantly, aside from hiring a superintendent, the next one on our list is to evaluate the superintendent. And, you know, why do we need to evaluate the superintendent? Well, the same reason that we evaluate other, every other employee within the school district. You know, it's reasonable for the supervisor to, you know, grade that person's job performance, set expectations, set goal setting, things of that nature. But more than anything, there are three legal requirements. There's a Department of Education regulations, as a superintendent has to be evaluated. I haven't seen Bill's contract, but every superintendent contract I've ever seen has a provision or a clause in there that the superintendent will be evaluated annually. And what else? You have a policy. Again, I haven't seen the North Hampton policy. But if, if you have a policy similar to the NHSBA sample policies, you've got a, a policy that says you're going to evaluate the superintendent on an annual basis. And to, without getting lost in the weeds in that, I presume, does, does SAU 21 have a, have a, have a superintendent review pro, protocol, if you will, or you've got a, a pretty good, I see most heads nodding good. You know, it tends to only become a problem when it becomes a problem if you're not doing the evaluation. But, um, so if you've got a, if you've got a, 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 a system or a protocol in place, fantastic. And Will, were you going to handle the next one, or do you want me to handle that?
Yeah, I can, I can handle that one. So in, in almost all, hopefully, if, if you're a well-run district, you know, hopefully, you don't encounter this one too often. But in, in almost all of your business, you know, the school board's business, you are acting in a legislative capacity. You're making governing decisions. You're making policies. You're creating budgets. You're making, you know, broad, broad decisions that impact, you know, the, the community as a whole, or, or subparts of it. Occasionally, however, you will be called upon to act in what's called a quasi judicial capacity. So you are a hearing officer. You are the, the judge and the jury over a matter that impacts individual rights, whether that's, you know, a teacher dismissal, or a student expulsion, a manifest education, manifest educational hardship, and, and various things like that. When you're in, acting in that capacity, your, your responsibilities change somewhat. You know, when we, when you're thinking about an individual right, a hearing is a way to, to protect, provide due process to the individual who's affected before their, before that right is taken away or abrogated in some way. And, and so when you think about what we expect as basic due process in this country, one is to have a fair judge, fair jury, impartial judge and jury. And the other one is to hear the evidence that's being used to decide the case against us, to hear it and to be able to challenge it. And so this hearkens back in part to one of the points that Greg was making before. When you receive that call from the constituent, not about the potholes in the parking lot, but rather about what Mrs. Smith did in the third grade class on a particular day, you, you're... You're, that's, that's where you have to start thinking, oh my goodness, I might be a juror in this case, you know, somewhere down the road. Your job at that point is get enough information so that you can make sure that the information gets to the proper person. Well, the proper person is almost always going to be the principal. You're not going to be the one to contact the principal, you're going to contact the superintendent just to make sure the superintendent's aware of it. So you don't need much information. You, you, you just need to know the name and, and, you know, generally, you know, you know, that, not this particulars of the complaint and, and move it along. The other thing you need to know is which, which policy would be helpful to that person making the call? Because when you give, refer them to the policy, so KEB Barrett mentioned that before, and I believe there's a copy of our KEB in that packet, deep in, deep in the back, we've got a series of pertinent policies of, you know, our sample policies. But when you can tell them KEB, then what you're doing is giving them the roadmap that they need to follow the, you know, what we referred to before as the chain of command, but rather in, in this instance, it's really the process. And this is the thing that if they follow this process and they end up in front of the school board, then it's supposed to be there at that point. And, and by, you know, only asking the questions that you need in order to refer it, you've, you know, you've protected that person, the, the other person in this case, due process rights. It means that when you hear that case, you're going to be hearing it based on the evidence that's presented to you then. You don't need to know whether there are other people in the class. You don't need to know, well, what happened before that? You, you don't need any of that. All you need to know is who it is, pass it on and, and, and let them know how to, how to handle that. The, you know, I think, I think those are really the main points, and I know we're trying to move this along. So if you have questions about that, you know, pose them now and, and we'll try to push forward to get through the packet.
Any questions? No? Okay.
I think I have the next one too, right?
Sure, go ahead. I would say I can take it, Will, but if you want to take it, go ahead.
Well, I, I'd like to say, so most school districts, they negotiate their contract and they put it before their own district voters and there you have it. But my understanding in 21 is it's a completely different process because everybody's got to approve it, all of your separate districts. But, you know, collective bargaining, the school board is the party to the contract. So the school board has a negotiating team that negotiates the tentative agreement. The cost items have to be placed before the voters. The voters approve the cost items, they don't need to approve the non-cost items. If you, if you ever negotiated agreement that has zero cost items, it doesn't even need to go to the voters. So, you know, the, you know, that's, that's the basic responsibility. My suggestions to school boards generally is when you create your negotiating team, be mindful of, you know, who they, you're putting on those teams. They have to have a commitment to doing the negotiations. They can't be available one day every three weeks during the season where you really need attention to the negotiations. You also want someone, you know, if, if you have a very divided board, you might want division on the negotiating team. But if you have a board that has a strong position on one side or the other, that's what you, you want that team to be representative of the board. And, and the reason I say that is, you know, you, you probably know, and if you don't, I'll tell you now, in almost all respects as a school board member, you don't lose your individual right to speak. So you get to maintain your individual position, even if you vote against the board. That said, if you are on a negotiating team and a tentative agreement is negotiated, you as a team member have an obligation to support that contract. You can't go into the stage of board ratification and vote against it. That would be an unfair labor practice against the district. You can't go out to the taxpayers and say, yeah, I know I was on the team and I support, you know, I, I voted to, you know, get this tentative agreement, but don't vote for it. You know, I'm not going to vote for it. And you, you have a duty to support the tentative agreement and to advance its passage. So, you know, boards should be mindful of, you know, people who are on the team. You know, otherwise that board member has a, you know, has a sort of a one-person veto because knowing that you need the support of all the team members, if you have one person who's not going to support a position, even though the balance of the board would, you know, you're, you're walking into some tricky territory. So just be, you know, sometimes it's, anybody wanted to do the negotiations? No, 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 no. It's very time consuming and, and, you know, can be a heavy burden. And so it's whoever, yeah, I'll do it. Well, just be mindful of that process. And I think that's it for the quick version of collective bargaining.
Any, any collective bargaining questions for Will? No? Okay, I'll move on, I'll finish up the, the next two provisions relative to the school board's responsibilities. This is on page five, if you've got the handout in front of you. Communicate with the public and keep the public informed of board actions. Now, I want everybody to be mindful too that you're all familiar with the right to know law and, you know, we, Matt read that sort of introduction, you know, to the meeting today relative to their electronic meetings. And so obviously we have the right to know law about, you know, public records and open meetings, public access, things of that nature. But the communication, especially in these times, takes on a, a much different role. There are many times when NHSBA is hosting its new school board member orientation and, you know, we've got 100, 120 new school board members in, in our conference space here at our office building. And I just put it out there, you know, why did you, why did you run for school board? What was, you know, what was one of the reasons you ran for school board? And so maybe not surprisingly, but there are many, many answers. Many times people have answered, well, I wanted more communication from the school board. I felt like the voters didn't know what was going on. I wanted more information from the school board. So, you know, whether or not that's a matter of perception or a matter of reality, it's out there. So be mindful of the way and, and, and the, the methods and the frequency with which you communicate to the public, especially in the days of COVID where a kid gets sick or you have to, you know, I don't know if you're doing hybrid or in person or full-on remote, but, you know, a kid gets sick, a teacher gets sick, we have to change up the schedule. There's an important meeting because something happened within the building. And, and, you know, some districts and some boards, you know, they, they try and do, you know, maybe a monthly newsletter from the board. It doesn't have to be significant, you know, a couple paragraphs about, these are the things that were happened and, you know, do you have a social media presence? Do you send things out on Twitter and Facebook? Even if you're not soliciting feedback or taking comments on those, is it an easy, easy way for, I mean, let's face it, where do parents get their information these days? How many of you within the first five minutes of waking up today looked at your phone? Right? So we, that's how we communicate. So be mindful of, of, of efforts to communicate with the public in, in a timely manner and a correct manner and in a method that parents are going to get the message and constituents can still get the message. And the last aspect relative to school board roles and responsibilities is strategic planning, long-term and short-term goals, plans and objectives. Now, NHSBA advocates strategic planning, again, as sort of a best practice, good governance practice. But there's also a Department of Education rule, while it doesn't use the phrase strategic planning, but it says, school board shall, this is the bottom of page five, if you've got the handout. School board shall develop long-range plans and identify measurable and attainable short-term objectives. I mean, that sounds like that's exactly what goes into strategic planning. And why is strategic planning important? Well, it, it helps every aspect of board governance. It helps identify facilities needs, it helps identify technology needs, it helps keep track of student population trends within the school district. And what do all those things impact? Your budget, right? You know, you know, then if you have a strategic plan, you know when you need to buy new laptops, you know when you need to fix the boiler or fix the roof. You need, you'll know if you're going to be, you know, seeing a rise or a decline in your student population. Well, what that, what's that going to impact? Staffing, busing, materials? So it's all interconnected. So to the extent that you don't have a strategic plan, the board may want to have a talk about, about developing one and bringing a facilitator and, and, and things of that nature. Strategic planning can take on a couple of different, different realms and varieties. Some boards keep it sort of internal, other boards opened up to, you know, the community at large and will have, you know, a variety of subcommittees of facilities, subcommittee, curriculum, subcommittee, so on and so forth. But if you don't have those, those sort of long-term plans or long-term strategic goals, we would encourage you to have a conversation among the board. And that's all right, he's fine. He's a cute kid, so let him come join us if he wants. So anyway, strategic planning, an important aspect of board governance that I think touches on and impacts all the previous things that we, we talked about for the last half hour or so. Moving on, on page six of the handout, we've got a page or so, some bullet points about the learning curve for new school board members. I won't read through those, but read through those on your own time, please. Again, they, they relate to sort of best practices and good governance and, and some things for, for new school board members to, to consider as, as you're moving on with your role on, on the school board. So with that, we talked about the role of this, of this, of this, of the school board. And we looked at various statutes and regulations about policy requirements and, and what the school board's role is in, with respect to collective bargaining and right to know law and budget and finance and things of that nature. So we're, we're going to shift over to some conversation about what are the superintendent's roles? I mean, when I say superintendent, to some degree, this falls on all administrators. Obviously your superintendent's on top and then he'll delegate to, to your special ed director, to your business manager, to your assistant superintendent, you know, whoever the administrator may be. But so if you, I'm going to flip back and forth, I understand you may not have hard copies of this, but I'm going to look, read on page seven of the handout, but I'm also going to jump back and, and, and reference a couple of things we already talked about on page, on page two. Remember on page two, we talked about the school board has to adopt employment-related policies, budget-related policy. Did you have a question there, Greg?
I did, just sort of like an administrative kind of thing is we're at about 47 minutes here. I think we had an hour planned, so happy to go over a little bit, but we do have some work after this that.
Absolutely.
And so I just want, I noticed we're on page six of 18, so I just wanted to.
Yeah, no, we're not, we're not going through all 18 pages, Greg. We've got probably maybe two or three more pages to go, but thank you for, for keeping track of the time. So on page two, we talked about school board policies. We talked about budget policies, employment-related policies. If we look on page seven though, where we list the superintendent's substantive duties, just as there's a Department of Education rule and regulation on, on responsibilities of school boards, there's a co-equal rule that talks about the rules and responsibility of the, of the superintendent. So I, we've got the important language highlighted, but EOD 302.02A in the middle there, superintendent shall nominate all certified staff and appoint other employees in accordance with state law, rules of the state board, and here's the kicker, and local school board policies. If we're talking about nominating staff and appointing other employees, those are your employment-related policies, right, that we talked about back on page two. If we look at, I'm going to jump down to D, the middle bullet point there, the superintendent's responsible for developing and recommending to the school boards within the SAU the annual budget. Remember we talked back about the school board policy? You have to have a policy relative to the purchase of equipment, supplies and services. We said that's related to your budget. But then the school board, the superintendent policy, so on and so forth, in accordance with school board policy. And I won't read through all of them, but E, responsible for an accounting system, finances, fiscal, in accordance with local school board policy. F, educational planning in accordance with local school board policy. So I think this really, I mean, gets to the gist of when we talk about roles and responsibilities and governance versus management and governance versus administration. School board sets and adopts the policy per the regulations and statutes. And then the administration, on the other hand, implements those policies that the board has set forth. And again, what's the oversight aspect to make sure that those policies are being implemented? You have your, you have your review process for your superintendent, you provide an annual review. And the reality is it's not an annual review, it's an everyday review. Bill, you know as well as I do, you're being evaluated at every meeting, every phone call with a school board member. It's not like you need to sit down in, in, in April or May and do, you know, fill out the form and there's your evaluation. This is ongoing and it, and it's constant all year long. The other thing, sort of an aside, the other thing we recommend with respect to superintendent evaluations, you know, maybe benchmark some things and do sort of mini evaluations every three or four months. You know, you do one in maybe October, November, you do one again in January, then you do one again, sort of the end of the year, the more, the more formulative, if you will. And, and if you've got a system or a process that works for you, don't, don't change it. But I, I, I put that out there as a recommendation because I know some boards have moved to that model. But anyway, superintendent implements school board policy and that's consistent with, with our guidance and with the Department of Education regulations.
Yeah. And I, I want to call attention to, to one that, that filters into a couple of the other points that, that we made. And it's looking at that same page seven that Barrett was just reading from and, and ED 30202, you want to look at, and again, this is the duties of the superintendent. And 30202B, it has direct and supervise the work of all employees of the district or districts within the school administrative unit, blah, blah, blah. And then when you go and look at, you know, that, that, the corresponding provision for school board members, and I'll see if I can find it. Okay, it's on page two and, and, and really all it says is adopt policies necessary and desirable to control and effectuate. So it's recruitment, employment, evaluation and dismissal of teachers and other employees. You'll see that there's no function in there for school boards or school board members to directly supervise employees. There's no, and, and, and individual members have no individual authority to, you know, go in and say, I need you to give me all the information you have relative to, you know, detentions over the last three weeks. That, those instructions come through the power of the superintendent to direct and supervise the work of the employees. Anyway, I just thought that was a, you know, an important point to make.
Sure. Thank you, Will. And actually that segues into the top of page eight. The next responsibility of superintendents is to nominate professional staff. And again, this sort of relates to the, to the provision that, that Will was just talking about, that the superintendent nominates and the school board elects staff. Are there any, are there any questions on, on that? I know that the board has probably gone through that, you know, every, you know, I mean, you, you're doing your, your non-renewals by April 15th and hiring staff all summer long. But just for, if you're not familiar with the process, when you're looking to hire a certified staff member, the superintendent has to bring forth a recommendation to the board. I, I recommend that we hire Mary as the first grade teacher. And then the board elects basically votes to affirm that recommendation, has to take some sort of action on that recommendation. Any questions about the hiring processes? And I'll move on to try and wrap this up in the next minute or two. Okay, great. I'm looking at page eight and nine. This is going to sort of roll this all together, hopefully. When we look at the superintendent's responsibilities, this is RSA 194C4. And you can see there's A through R of all the responsibilities that the, that the superintendent is responsible for, all the areas of school board management and operations that the superintendent is generally responsible for. And if you look through this list, most of these speak to sort of day-to-day operations of the school district, right? Making sure the facilities are working, payroll, cash flow, compliance with, you know, federal law, so on and so forth. So what, what I want to sort of hearken back to is if you were to look at that list and then exit, develop some sort of cross-reference between this list and your local policies, I'm willing to bet you have a policy that speaks to at least 90% of these responsibilities. And again, that gets back to sort of the main theme of our general presentation is that the school board is going to set the policies, excuse me, and the super. that the school board is going to set the policies, excuse me, and the superintendent is going to implement policies relative to all the responsibilities that he or she has there on pages eight and nine. Pupil achievement, grant writing, school board operations, use and maintenance of facilities, administrative staffing, transportation, school budget, school calendar, so on and so forth. So that is sort of the, the quick version of roles and responsibilities. Are there any, any last questions? I know you've got other information you need to get to today, so I want to be mindful of everybody's time. Is any questions either about the materials or since you've got Will and I on the line, any, any other things you'd like to ask or, or ask us to cover?
So no questions, two quick comments, if I may. First of all, thank you. Regarding the superintendent evaluation, I know a couple of years ago, SAU 21 kind of updated the evaluation process before Dr. Lupini got here. I was partly involved with that and, and going through it, there was, I know that the New Hampshire School Board Association has a seminar on it, but not really a good repository of different processes. I would just toss it out there, if, if districts are willing to share what they do, it may help you have a good set of tools. And if SAU 21 wants to share, Dr. Lupini, your call, I think what you have in place and what you improved upon since you got here is a really solid tool compared to other districts.
Thank you very much, Tom. Yeah, I, I will say that, you know, we keep a handful of, of sample evaluation forms on hand. Some of them are better than others. I'll be honest with you, I've never, I've been looking 15 years for like a really good evaluation model or a tool, haven't found one. But I've also, I get the sense that one of the reasons, one of the challenges of having a, a tool is so much of it is process-related and not so much about the form that you're filling out, but what process is your board or your SAU going to use? You know, and I can speak to what other districts have used. I know how they do it in SAU 16, it's Exeter and the surrounding towns, and a similar sort of, similar SAU, if you will, they've got a lot of K through eight districts and then they all feed into kind of the same high school. But there's this process-driven, not form or, or tool-driven. So thank you for that, Tom.
So yeah, so I think, I think if, if you look at the, the process and the, and the tool, because it's combined that, that we use here, it's, it's pretty solid, and I'd be interested in your, in your feedback. The second thing is on social media. Listening to you and one of the things that occurred to me is in our community, Northampton, there's a very robust social media community. And I, I also was tying back to when we're not together, we're individual parents, not school board members. And I just wanted to kind of punctuate that because it's really easy to get sucked into some of those exchanges online and, or just to stay out of it as board members.
Sure. I will say, Will, do you want to briefly quickly mention the materials in the right to know law handout that I, that I've sent out?
I won't, I won't hit the materials, but I'll just hit the, the major concern that you have and a couple of, of key points. So first, you know, remember always that you're speaking as an individual, but, but people in the public or your employee, you know, employees or they don't always see it that way. They see you as speaking as a board member. So it's, it's incumbent upon you, not upon them, to be very, very clear when you're speaking as an individual. But social media creates a real problem because, especially if you, if you visualize a, a comment thread on Facebook, one person makes a comment and then 18 comments later, you don't see it. So I might've gone on there and said, you know, I'm an individual, you know, speaking, you know, who happens to be on the board, but I'm speaking in my individual capacity. And I just put it in that first block, but then eight, you know, messages later, I say something else, but somebody else came in and they didn't see that. But that, you know, that's just this, you, you would have to put that in every single comment you made. But more importantly, and this is, you know, I just put that as background, 91A, the, the right to know law says that a meeting occurs when a quorum of board members communicates in a manner that allows for, or convenes in a manner that allows for contemporaneous communication and discusses a matter of board business. So that means if, or, you know, within board jurisdiction. So that means if you have three board members who comment on a Facebook page about something that's school-related, you're having a meeting right then and there in violation of the right to know law. And, and did you go back and see the previous 98 comments to make sure that two other board members didn't communicate? Probably not. So you, you know, whether or not you think you're talking in your individual capacity, the right to know law says you can't do that because it would be too easy to circumvent the right to know law if you said, no, no, I was in the bar talking to my two board member, co, you know, co-board members, but we were only talking about board business in our individual capacities, not in our board member capacity. It's the same thing. So you, you, you know, that there's, there's some real concerns about participating in social media on outside comment threads. Now, you might designate a, you know, spokesperson for the board that might have more latitude to do that. Oftentimes, it's the chairperson and you probably have a policy that designates the chair as the spokesperson for the board. And he or she may have a little bit more latitude, but I just heard a, you know, I, we, we've got a percolating issue in another district where the board chair voted to approve the reopening plan. There was an issue, you know, that impacted the chair directly. And now the board chair is out speaking on behalf of the board against the board policy that initially he had even supported. So he's not, he's not speaking on behalf of the board because it's in conflict with what the board actually voted to do. So that you, you, the, the whole point there is, as a board member, our recommendation is that, you know, maybe you maintain your own page and there's, you've got pinned to the top of it, a disclaimer, making it very clear, anytime anybody looks at anything on the page, they can see this is not a, a, you know, a, an account that's associated with the school district in any way or the school board in any way. This is a personal account. I don't speak on behalf of the board, I don't speak for the board, et cetera. I mean, you know, that, that's the basics.
So we'll get going. Thank you, Greg. I mean, I didn't mean to run long. Any other last questions for us while we're here? Thank you again for having us. We appreciate the opportunity. We hope it was helpful. If there's any follow-up, please, by all means, get in touch with myself or get in Will, or get in touch with myself or get in touch with Will. And thank you again, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Barrett. Thank you, Will.
Thank you, Will. I'll go off now.
See you next week.
All righty, thank you.
All right. Any continued discussion on that or, or comments as a board? Good. All right, that was really helpful. I didn't have that when I first started, Tom, I don't think we did it when you came on board either. So it's a nice reminder, some of these lessons we learned hard way along the way. Oh, wow.
Oh, well.
Yeah. Okay, so our next agenda item is reviewing our 2019 and 2020 board goals. So typically what we've done in these on a yearly basis is, is kind of just looking back on what we said we were going to do and evaluating ourselves and sort of the past, we've kind of just kind of put a grade on ourselves, but I think it makes sense to self-reflect and to look at the things that we said that we wanted to accomplish last year or this past school year, which was, ended up being an unusual school year, for sure. And then from there, we'll move on to, to the school improvement plan and then setting new board goals. So I will read our first board goal last year for the 2019-20 school year was board goal one, we believe robust communication with the community is vital to the ongoing support and growth of our school and its education initiatives. The Northampton School Board will work with the NHS and SAU administration to design and implement an education and communication effort for the Northampton community relative to our competency-based education initiatives. So that was our first board goal. Any observations?
Yeah. I think the, the presentations that we had throughout the school board meetings was a, was fantastic, both to educate me, to showcase our teachers and to make sure that it's available for the community. The place I would give us a kind of a demerit in that is that just because we did it, doesn't mean people heard it. So if we choose to do this again, we may want to find a way to make sure that we, we push the information out more consistently. But I, but I think it was a huge improvement from prior years.
What we did do on that, Tom, was we, we, we had talked about sort of clipping those presentations because we did them in a number of districts, right? And we thought that sort of taking those clips and pushing them out or creating someplace where they were and then making people aware of that, we, we didn't get to that part.
Yeah, so with everything going on, totally get it. I, I, you know, if we choose as a board to, to continue with that goal going forward, that may be kind of the next evolution. But.
Agreed.
But I think there was a lot of good work done by the administration and, and teachers to help us with that.
Yes, I would, I would agree wholeheartedly. I think carving out those, those areas to really, especially with the competency base, because it's been a little bit of an angst with people because it's a shift and it's difficult for a generation that grew up with ABCDs to understand the competency base. So there was a really great, great presentation. Bill, I know you're waiting to jump in here.
Yeah, no, so I want to say this, and if you don't, if you want to stop me, please do. I think there was actually a side benefit to that. I'll say this to keep Susan from having to sort of say it. I think there was actually a side benefit to this, which wasn't embedded in the original goal. And I think, I think it's that the relationship between the staff and the board improved. I mean, we talked about this during the first year in particular, when I interviewed staff and whatever, there, there, there were some barriers. No, I'm not assessing any blame here at all. They, they were there, right? And, and as people volunteered to do these, I, I think Susan, Becca can probably comment on this, but I heard lots of positive feedback from people who maybe when I got here were saying, yeah, I'm not going to a board meeting. I'm not going to do that, right? And, and, and some of those people came and presented and said very positive things to their colleagues. So I think that was a real sort of side benefit to this that wasn't embedded in the, in the goal to begin with, but which I think happened.
I mean, I would just add that I feel like it ended up being a way for the board to express appreciation to the staff and the staff felt appreciated with the, from the feedback that they got.
That's great. I think to, just to add on to that, Bill, I think there was a lot of work done around climate and culture and this, you could also like put as a sub-bullet under climate and cultures, this communication. Tom, to your point around, I've always struggled with board communication to the community because we don't have, we have like one month, one day a month where we can communicate to a public that never comes to our meetings. And so for further discussion, as we get into our next area, like how can we communicate or do we drive our communication through the SAU or NHS administration who are the communicators really? But it's a, it's a good point.
Yeah, so on, on the communication, two, two quick points around the communication piece, I think the communication went way beyond just the, not just, but the information around competency-based learning. Because as, I think as a, as a board and even bending the rules, making sure that we're listening to the community when they're there, giving them a chance to speak, that, that part continues, right? Because we could really keep it short. So I think that's been a nice job. I think you're right that it, it may be that we need to do this on competency-based learning anyways, through, through the school and through the administration by leveraging other tools, right? The website or, or Friday folders or whatever. One other side note in terms of kind of benefits that happened, part of my observation for being on the board over a couple of years, and Bill, you're exactly right, I think, I think it did bridge the gap, having the presentations. Part of what I also saw was that we've come a long way as a, as a district, thanks to the work that you all have done in the SAU and the administration within competency-based education, because the messaging from the teachers and what they're saying about it is so different now than it was before all the work that you did three, four years ago, right? So I don't think we even could have had the conversations that we had or seen the presentations that we saw without that background work. So it's all, it's all together.
All right, so that's communication. Board goal number two, we are committed to recognize the value of work of our teachers and provide an opportunity for the community to hear about the work and the accomplishments of our students. The Northampton School Board will create opportunities to hear about the work of our teachers and students at board meetings. I think we, we linked, so part of this is linked to the first portion we just talked about, obviously. That would, that would give us a fair, a fairly decent grade there. I'm a hard grader, so. I, and I think, well, in all fairness, I think COVID screwed, screwed up my vision of what, of what I thought this could be. I really appreciate all the professional, professionals that came in to communicate. And I think my vision of just when we wrote this goal was having a lot of the kids and students involved in this as well. And so that's where hopefully we'll get into a place where we'll be able to integrate that a little bit more. Not, not to downgrade or take away from the professionals that are coming in, because I, I feel strongly we should keep that going. It seems to be very successful and positive. I'd like to get more of the kids integrated as part of this as well.
Yeah, I would agree too. I want to acknowledge that this year especially was kind of difficult because of COVID and remote learning and all of that. But, um, you know, depending on how things go moving forward, we might be able to use what Marcia Zavas did as a model for getting students involved, even if we are doing remote meetings, right? You know, that was, that was pretty cool, both on the video side and as well as the students speaking.
Yeah, it was great. Great. All right, any other, any other comments there on goal two?
No, I, I just, I don't think you should be so hard on yourself, Greg. I mean, even during COVID, we did have the kids coming in with Marcia and doing the play and stuff like that. So I, I think, and those were pretty well-attended meetings with, when Marcia was on and she did the nice thing with the play. So I just agree, I think things like that are really great and we will hopefully continue to do those.
All right, our last goal, board goal three, reviewing and updating the mission and vision of Northampton School is a task that should encompass all stakeholders. The Northampton School Board will initiate and participate in a visioning process with the school, the SAU and the Northampton community. And so I know Susan has done quite a bit on this through the school improvement plan and through the school council. I know myself and Aaron have been sitting in and participated in some of that as well. But I, I, I think while we were maybe some active listeners, that the school really did, the panel that you guys put together and the work that you've done has come a long way to, to reframing that up in conjunction with all of the work on climate and culture, which doesn't show up in any of our goals, which is ironic because it was almost one of the biggest problems we had was climate and culture. But I think these three goals helped, helped feed those and alleviates some of the stress. Let's, I don't know if you wanted to comment on all that, all that hard work. That would give us a better grade there. I think you're muted, Sue.
Sorry. I shared the latest update in a document with all of you too, so, or earlier today that had like the, the mission stayed the same, the vision was adjusted slightly, the guiding beliefs had a, like a few adjustments and then the PRIDE acronym. So, I mean, I feel like, I feel like there was input from the board. You know, we gave board members an opportunity to do the profile of the portrait of a graduate input and we got some of those. And then, like you said, you and Aaron were involved. So, so, I mean, it seems to me like potentially the next step is, is, you know, getting the word out about those updates with the community and thinking about how, how we do it as, as a school and what, if you have a role in that too.
Very good. Any other questions or comments on that?
No, great job. No, great job.
All right. Moving on, school improvement plan.
I didn't, I'm sorry. I'm having a hard time coming off a mute. Um, is the mission statement going up on the website for the community? Is it there already? I just missed it.
So, you know, it's funny, when I sent it to you, I, I emailed Carly to make sure it was up there. She thought it was already up. I, I, I didn't have time to go back and look. If it wasn't, if it wasn't up there now, before, it's up there today because she's, she's going to double check it.
Okay.
Sure. Yeah. It's in, and we put all that in our faculty handbook.
Good.
The faculty would see it as well.
Yeah, you guys worked hard.
Yeah, they had a lot of, I mean, they had a lot of say in it, but we have enough new people that we wanted to make sure that that was part of what, you know, kind of what went out. I will agree with you. I don't think it was as, as late as the summer. I would say it may not have been updated on the website because, I mean, just like as a kind of funny aside, when, when we did some interviewing, um, folks like talked about our vision statement, which was the old one. Cause it was still on the website because they had done their homework that way. So we'll get the new one up so they can impress us with their knowledge of the new one next time.
All right. Next on our agenda is looking at the, the school improvement plan. And so if you're on board docs, you can see that, uh, we have, we have the older one, sort of the progress report. And then the second one is the final. Is that right, Sue?
Yep. I also reshared the, I just made a copy of the final one because when I looked at it, um, it looked like I had given way too many people editing privileges on it. So I, so I made a copy of it and reshared it with you guys, just in case something happened to it.
All right. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest we move to the final one and, and, uh, take a, take a peek at that. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I mean, it's the same. Nobody actually did do anything to it, but when I realized how many people had access, I just made a copy and reshared that with you.
Okay.
It's the same.
Um, so I'm open to how we kind of get from, uh, point C here to point D, which is setting our board goals. We could kind of do, push these two together and review the school improvement plan as we talk about our goals, or we could just do a court review. I'm assuming everyone has looked. Well, maybe that's the first question you should ask. Has everyone seen the, the current school improvement plan and read through it?
So I can also just, just as like a, a, a quickest update possible, we kept the same goals and changed the action steps because we felt like they were multi-year goals. And, um, in fact, goal number two is almost exactly the same because it was supposed to be a two-year goal to start with, which was around curriculum and instruction. So that's the same as last year, just with the target date of ending in this year. And then, um, we just changed some of the action steps in goal one and goal two, goal three, what was, um, about competency based instruction. And, um, like as a, like I said, the Cliff Notes, we, we did add a couple of action steps around, um, improving our virtual learning structures, knowing that that was, that was a possibility on the horizon again this year. And, um, and then we, um, we, in the first goal, I think we included like rollout of the mission and the vision and the, and the pride acronym, things like that. So they're essentially the same overarching goals with different action steps.
Gotcha. So just to frame this, just to make sure I'm right. So it's climate and culture, curriculum alignment, grading assessment, reporting and communication? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Now, the grading assessment and communication, the third one, most of those action items have changed in the more of a building focus. A lot of what we accomplished last year was as an SAU team, really getting at the, the power standards and competencies and getting those articulated and power school setup and all of that. And now it's more about that successful implementation, um, in this building.
Am I missing something? I see three here, not four. The communication part isn't in the SIP. Is it embedded someplace?
I think the communication is related to some of the goals. So like communication about the mission and vision. So that's one of the action steps in goal one.
Gotcha.
There's some communication action steps within each of those goals, I believe. Like, I mean, now I don't have it in front of me, but.
Okay, so just.
Ayesha and I are going to pop out for like just a couple of minutes and make sure dismissal is going okay, and then we'll be right back.
Okay.
Greg, I may have misspoke. Um, I might've written down communication in my notes preparing just because I know that we had it.
Yeah.
But I was, I just think we should align to this, the, the SIP goals and how we can support the administration and, 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 uh, teachers in executing that.
Yes, I agree. And, and if, so I think in the case of communication where it's not a specific SIP goal, but it's sort of embedded in there. It all, if we had one as communication, it would also support, you know, what's, what's going on. Chair, down button. Uh, so that, so yeah, that's the three that, that, um, the school has outlined is climate and culture, curriculum alignment and grading assessment and reporting. Okay. Uh, so I guess, um, if people are familiar with it, have read over it. Uh, Sue's not here, but what I would say there is a very ambitious on, uh, climate and culture, seven tactics. That's, uh, Becca's here, so I'll say it to Becca. That's pretty deep. That's a lot to bite off, I would say. You know, congratulations to you guys. You're, 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 uh, going for it.
Thank you. Well, and yes, and a lot of it is making sure that it's, um, reaching all, um, and all constituents in the school. So making sure that it's at all our grade levels, um, our elementary, our middle schools, supporting our teachers and everything. So there's just so many components to that piece. We want to be sure to reach all of them.
Yep. And, um, curriculum alignment looks, looks pretty focused, with four or five strategies, as does, uh, well, actually, assessment, grading, reporting. That's a deep one too, but I think that covers a lot of different areas. So it's hard not to be deeper there. You could almost break that into, to, to three, you know?
Now, um, I had a question, uh, Becca. I know, sitting in on one of the meetings, I probably mid-year last year, with the council, um, you had created your, um, vertical teams. And with everything that's happening, are you guys in the new schedules and stuff? Is that something that's even able to make it into the curriculum right now? Or, or how can we help you?
I appreciate that question, Erin, and it has been weighing on our minds a lot. We do have some great support from the SAU in that this year, our professional development time is primarily for building level work. There certainly are some important things that we will continue to do as an SAU, but a lot of our professional development calendar was cleared this year to allow time for us to do that work during PD. Um, we're also going to take a different approach to professional learning communities, um, this year. So some of that work, the vertical teams was done through that PLC time, which was the additional meeting that was kind of introduced, that was introduced to the calendar on, um, at a monthly basis. And we'll have teachers that continue to do that work as well as some of the other, um, things associated with our SIP plan and other, other passions and, and student centered initiatives that are happening, um, from, uh, from the teachers' interests. So we definitely have the time for it. The structure is different. Um, so we'll be using our time differently this year, but we'll get it done.
Okay.
Okay. So I'm just making a quick notes here. All right. So, um, maybe we, maybe it might be best to start with last year's goals and to take, take a look at them and see are the, do we want to maintain any of these goals, adjust them, or throw them out and replace them with new? I would offer that, uh, I would, I wouldn't rec, we've had five in the past. I think three is a good number. Um, so let's, I, I would offer and suggest that we keep it pretty tight and focused and not try to bite off too much, but create some goals that maybe have a little bit more of a broader, uh, definition to them. So we can attack a couple of things within, within each goals. So.
I like starting, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I, I, I mean, if you were going to go through them separately, but again, I just think the communication one, for us to hold on to, um, some of our goals from last year and build off of them, I wouldn't want to stop the progress that it, it seems to be that we're making with the communication and, um, you know, kind of opening up our board meetings and making them more, um, friendly and encouraging to be at. So I, I still think that's a huge goal to keep working at.
So it is interesting as a, as a singular communication goal, it's, it's actually built into two of our board goals. The first one and the second one really covered up on a lot of communication. The first one was focused on communicating cur, or, uh, competency based learning. That's what the first portion of commu, of the first goal was really focused against that. And so I would, I would ask, do we want to maintain that level, like keep communicating competency? Do we want to shift that into let's communicate, uh, something else or, or, or add, add a new one? You know what I mean? That the first board goal was really around competency because.
Do you think we were, checked the box on that? Or do we just think that, I mean, we did, we did a lot with it last year or we're, it was encouraged. We didn't really do much, but I, well, I shouldn't say. We, I think we brought the teachers in at the beginning of the board meetings, which was great. Um, maybe continuing with that. But I mean, I think most of the, the best stuff was done, um, with Becca and sharing like how to read the report cards and stuff like that. I think that was really helpful.
Yeah, I would agree.
We'll have a little bit more of that this year. I mean, but I do think a lot of it's going to come from the building. So for example, our elementary school families are going to be getting their report cards on Power School for, again, it, but it'll be revamped. But I, I think a lot of that can just come from, from the.
You guys.
Yeah. Cause we will have a lot to share, but.
So I think most recent, we've had obviously more attendees to our meetings because there's been some hot topics. Um, are we going to open the schools? Are we not? Are we remote? Are we not? Changes that have happened along the way. But as far as communication, um, I think it wouldn't be necessarily a bad idea to Tom's point earlier to have some sort of, um, even after our meeting, a bulletin point that Susan can send out with a Friday email or a monthly email just to say, you know, here's what we discussed. And, you know, join the next meeting or something along those lines, just so people know what we have discussed and done. And, uh, encourage, uh, I agree with Aaron, to have, uh, teachers communicated in those meetings. I think it attracts people to them and see what's happening.
Yeah, I would be, I would, I would, I'm a, I'm a big belief in communicator. Uh, but I'm also a big belief in responsibility. And I will say, people know when, when the board meeting is, uh, it's posted. Um, we all have friends in the community. People choose not to attend the board meeting. So sending out or asking Susan, particularly because I think there's a lot on Becca and Susan Ayesha's plate, to ask them to then summarize the board meeting, which the public is invited to, but chose not to attend. I, I would not want to create more work for something that people have access to. And, and as I would also offer that people come to board meetings when there's conflict. And, and that's why people showed up to our board meetings. Cause the last board meeting, the conflict was sort of resolved, nobody. And so I don't mean to be harsh about it, but generally people show up when there's something wrong and they want to be informed. So I re, I respect the notion, Normina. I really don't want to create more work for, for Susan. My opinion, I would ask the other board members to, to weigh in on that as well.
Well, I wouldn't even put that on them. I think that would be something that one of us could, you know, a bullet point, a couple of things and just say, just attach this to the next email or something over saying, hey, can you summarize the next meeting? You know what I mean? That definitely would be quite a bit of work.
Gotcha. Sorry. I misunderstood that portion.
Could it be as simple as, uh, posting a link to the minutes of the meeting as soon as they're available? Uh, to write that email, just a copy of the minutes or a link to the minutes of the meeting?
It, it could be. I would say as a parent, I would be sensitive to receiving another email. And if it's embedded somewhere as a portion of it, okay. I know personally, I can't keep up with all the emails between the high school and the elementary school and the middle school. And it's a, it's a, it's a comment that I think is brewing with a lot of people right now. And probably something that as soon as Bill gets off the phone, maybe we have a secondary conversation with him. But the amount of information that's coming from classroom teachers, administrations, SAUs is absolutely burying us as a family. It's a lot. It's, it's almost over communication if there is such a thing.
Not that this is my place to speak, but you guys could also just direct them that on the SAU website, those minutes are there. So at the bottom, communication from the building.
Yeah, they are. I mean, that would be a more simple thing to kind of check off the box and make, help facilitate ease of communication for people. We don't have a lot of opportunities. So this has always been kind of my gripe with being that this, this type of elected public officials. We don't have a venue to communicate, right? Because we need, as, as we communicate, we communicate as a board. And so our opportunity is in these meetings. So I think it, it probably makes sense to keep that portion of it focused in the meetings. What can we do during those meetings if we choose to continue with communication? What do we want to communicate? What are, what are our top priorities to communicate within our meeting? And then try to drive the rest of the communication out through the SAU and, uh, and the administration and the school. Similar to last year where we chose competency based learning to kind of put a, put an exclamation point on and to make sure that Becca came in with updates every week and Tracy came in with updates every week. And that was kind of our, that was how we fulfilled that goal really, is to tap into, into the administration to have them come to our school board meeting and communicate that sort of for us.
Can I throw, and I, just a thought out? So, so if you felt good about the, the goal and the presentations around competency based learning and that, but that it's, that work's not completely done yet. Would you want to make all of your goals around communication and highlighting different aspects of the work at, at the school? And, and two of the things that I think we talked about, Beck and I had talked about, that, that we wondered if they'd be relevant for you. One, one, social emotional learning and just like the, you know, kind of the healing after the, you know, being back in the, from the pandemic and, and how we're doing things differently and the relationship piece and highlighting the social emotional programs that are taking place in the school, like advisory, open circle. And then even just links to SEL that, that take place in the, in the context of, of, of core curricular content. And then the other one that we wondered about was, um, you know, one of our challenges is, um, communicating with the whole community, given the fact that we have students on three different learning platforms. We have, we have some K to five students here in person. We have some K to five students in the Remote Learning Academy. And we have our sixth to eighth graders in enriched virtual learning. And so, you know, we want to make sure that we highlight the good things that are happening in all three of those locations. And that, that presents a challenge to me personally. I, I can be honest with you because, you know, being here in the building, I, I know that I'm inclined to notice all the things that are happening in the building. And I need to figure out how to make an effort to sit in on some RLA classes if I'm allowed to. And, you know, I know I can jump into the, to the, the enriched virtual learning here. And I did jump in this morning and I got pulled for something else. But I mean, just some sort of a, of a thought of how to highlight and connect a community that is, um, has kids and, and parents in three different platforms.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent point. Um, and I think you're.
Building of our, our K to eight community, like protecting that K to eight community.
Pre-K to eight. You gotta see, I mean, it's the funniest thing you ever. Preschoolers are under. They're out there three days a week under like, um, this little, they, they don't have a big tent because there's just a couple of them. And it's basically like a tailgate sized tent by the rock garden. It's adorable.
You're gonna say the preschoolers are tailgating? Is that what you?
That's what I heard.
They got wagons.
It's football season, so absolutely. So that, so that's a proposal, which I think is an interesting one, that, that we have an overall, um, vision for the season. Sorry, season. I, I work in seasonality, so I say season. We have a vision for the season, which is around communication. And we've broken down that into three strategic choices. We're going to communicate what we're doing uh, to support the kids around social and emotional, uh, not only the learning process, but also dealing with this sort of extraordinary circumstance that we're all in. We have a, uh, ability to communicate around, um, uh, to. We have a ability to communicate around, to the community about what all three sort of segments of our educational model looks like. And then, did you mention a third one? I regret to figure out the third one, but they can all be around.
Continuing the work that we started because I don't think any of us feel like we're done with the competency-based shares.
Competency shares? Do we think competency is, is the one to lean into the most? Not the most, but out of, is it a top three still?
I think that the families are going to start seeing it really for the first time. So when they look at their report cards now, there'll be more interest in competency-based education because they're going to see it when they look at their, their students' learning, at the reporting of their students' learning. So I think parents might, might have more questions about it than previously because it's in front of them.
Okay. What does everyone think about that as an option?
I like it. I think covering some of these things that are very much concerning to parents, social and emotional and the situation that we're in and how do we go about and addressing all those issues? And yeah, the three platforms can definitely be challenging to families and just understanding. I mean, I know my son who is in sixth grade at North Hampton, the schedule that, that they came up with was, was wonderful. Great, very much detailed and classes that he needs to be in. I was actually myself pretty impressed. So I think just sharing that with the, with the families and focusing on those issues, I'm up for it.
Okay. Tom, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I want, I want to make sure that we're, we're supporting the, the work of the administration. And I, and I definitely hear what Becca's saying about teachers are going to, I'm sorry. Families are going to start seeing the report cards and the rubber's going to hit the road, right? It's going to become.
Yeah, I think that's a good point and a, and a, and a strong argument to keep, to keep competency as a part of this goal. Aaron Martin, where are you guys at?
Yeah, I agree. I think some good framework to start with, communication in the SEL and keeping all the three models cohesive, working together, communicating well, it'd be very important.
I agree too. I like the facing around communication. And I do feel like it is helpful to, you know, to be reminded that it's almost as if there's three, you know, separate schools happening within our school right now. And to be aware of that is, we have to be. So, um, yeah, I, I like kind of focusing around there. We can build it from there.
Can I make a suggestion around the SEL one? And I love that the comments have all been so far about for the, the students, which is definitely that open circle is meant for that. The responsive classroom is meant for that. The core embedded is meant for that. But I also want to like to connect that to the work that was done last year with the, the support that you offered to the teachers and how wonderful that was for our community. And if we could include thinking about caring for our staff during, in that SEL goal, I think that would be really appreciated.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point. That's the one that I've mentally been getting hung up on as we're going through this. Because I think it's larger than, so SEL for me speaks to the, all the things we've done in the past around implementing social emotional learning. I think, I feel like it extends past that in this current situation because then the level of emotional stress, that's not kind of the normal emotional stress that we've been dealing with in the past. I almost want to kind of call it something, not something else, but, but include a portion or an addendum to it that includes the wellbeing and the, of how we're treating and, and dealing with everybody, given this unique circumstance. You know, does that make sense? All right. So maybe we can break some of that into a rough draft. Um, just as, sorry, once I get going, I just fly everything out. So, sorry, that's how I usually work in my group. Just everyone throws stuff on the table and we kind of sort it out. So please tell, tell me what you guys are thinking or.
Do you want me? So I have some language that I verbatim lifted from the Castle website that might be like useful. I can like copy it in the chat and you can pick and choose if you want. Do you want me to do that?
Yeah, sure.
Like, and the idea could be like that you would support and communicate about these things, but you can pick and choose what you want. But like, these are some of the goals that they had.
So as Susan's doing that, I'm thinking about how we kind of frame this up. Because last year it was three sort of goals. And this year we're talking about kind of having a header and then three strategies against that. We can formulate it the same way. I feel like, and I'll throw this out to the group, that the header isn't just communication. It's about sort of informed community and communication. I kind of in my head, I'm thinking, do we need to define what communication is a little bit differently? Not just about talking to people, it's about informing them. Maybe it's semantics.
Yeah. Can you, I don't know, explain that a little bit more, what you're thinking there?
So communication is a very broad statement. It could mean probably like a million different things. And I, so as a, as a header to what we're trying to focus on, I was thinking maybe we need to use some different terminology along with communication to, to kind of queue into what our goals are, are reaching towards. Communication as listeners, communication as information passers, communication as two-way dialogue. But communication can mean all those things. And I think what we're kind of focusing on and what we can control as a school board is the informative communication. How can we help inform our community about what's going on in the school?
I think that's a biggie to, to me, to, to keep the community informed. Yes, we have the meetings and, you know, we know they're not highly attended unless there is an issue. But I think taking the initiative to keep them informed is probably one of the bigger ones.
So informed communication as our header. Yeah. Does everything kind of fit in there? I think I have to see underneath that before like it just becomes, I don't know.
Yeah, I think it needs to be wordsmithed.
Yeah.
Informed community. I'm just reading in the, in the sidebar here from Sue.
It's, it's just sample language. You don't need all of it for sure, but I thought there may be a couple of phrases you might like.
Screenshot that. Give me my notes.
The other thing too, just, and this is just kind of a side comment, but I know I heard, I heard folks say that, you know, talking about attendance at the meetings and, you know, I think one of the things that increases attendance, at least for the group whose children come, is if we do have students that are participating, I think their parents often will, will, you know, if you have in-person meetings, they have to come because they get them there. But even a virtual meeting, I think, you know, people like to see their own children. And so if we can organize ourselves, you know, a little bit further in advance with the, with who's coming, then maybe we can get that word out and that would support some, some, you know, increased attendance as well.
I agree. Good marketing tactic. Nice, thank you, Susan.
Not as, sometimes that's been our fault because we've, we've had the idea and we've talked to the teachers, but we didn't organize the kids, you know, until just a few days before. So, you know, we, we can try to do better with that too.
Yeah, Greg, you said, wasn't student government in previous years somehow involved in the board? Do I remember that or am I mistaken?
You know, that not, not, no, no, not involved in the board, but they put off in comm and report you out. But Bill, I think, I have not been to any kind of school board, so forgive me, I'll admit that. But I do believe they have a representative of, of their students' government on the board.
They do, non, non-voting, who gives a report each month? Yes.
Yeah.
Kind of like, I mean, I, I know the kids are younger, but, you know, I, I, I think having, trying to connect the two could be a good way, another good means of communication as well.
I've not seen it at a K to eight level, but that doesn't mean it can't work.
Yeah, I mean, maybe it's, it's the eighth grade student government.
Yeah.
I kind of like that idea, actually. All right, we're getting kind of tactical here, so.
I know, going into the little details. The hows. Greg, are you writing something up or do you want one of us to be kind of writing a layout? Would, are you?
I hadn't, I, I've just taken notes. I hadn't really got to that. And then I'll kind of summarize at the end and then we can decide who or how we want to.
Yeah, we can, Greg, I'm happy to take a look at it. I think Susan said she was as well. We can, we can help you with drafting if you want.
If you're volunteering.
I think I just volunteered you though, Susan. And I do.
I will. So I don't mind taking a first pass and tossing it over to you guys.
All right.
But I would welcome that, yes. Thank you. The other topic that I think is going to come in and come up quite frequently, I'm anticipating, and maybe we sort of bake this into our conversations under one of these, communication and informing our community, is the return to school. I suspect we're going to get lots of questions along the way. And so we, we would probably be wise to address that at each school board meeting as well. It, it could come under the social and emotional portion of it, or actually probably under the three models of teaching portion of it. We could identify kind of what, what's being done in, in each model and then an update on where sort of return to school looks, looks like. I think it's just going to be, I'm just guessing that's something that comes up frequently and people are going to want to know about. Maybe it takes a little off your plate, Bill, as well. I'm sure you get lots of questions on that one.
I think that's a pretty good guess on your part, Greg. And really, I mean, starting October 1st, I think I sent you yesterday that matrix. Starting October 1st, we'll have that on a, on a every other week basis. So, so yeah, that'll, that'll sort of guide some of that conversation, I think.
Okay. All right.
Is that matrix, is that matrix public knowledge yet or has that been sent out?
The matrix is going out, just went out to staff and it's going out to parents tonight.
Okay, good.
With that timeline that I just went through, starting October 1st.
Okay. All right, so we're at 1:48, so we're encroaching on the final hour here. So what I've got is a, a sort of a leading, a leading statement around us focusing on communication as it relates to informing our community, et cetera, et cetera. Under that are three, three goals. The first one around the social, emotional and, and things that we're doing to support our students, staff and community. Second is updates on the three models of teaching, the three platforms we're using, as well as a back to school, like future, what the future looks like, AKA back to school. And goal three, continuing around competency and how we're communicating and using our, our platform of school board meetings to inform the public of what to expect as we start to roll out. And as Tom said, as the, as the rubber hits the road now. Does that sound good? All right, I'm going to write up a brief summary on each one. I'll pass it off to you guys as well as on to Susan and Bill. And we'll just start kind of wordsmithing it into the right spot.
That's great. That's terrific. Thank you. Thank you, Susan, for all that work.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks. And I don't know that the student government portion will show up in that, but I really like that idea. If, if the board is interested in it as well, of having some type of non-voting eighth grade president or however Sue, you think is appropriate to have them sit on the board. And I would never make them sit through Matt's financial presentation unless we think it's beneficial. But maybe they come for the first portion of the.
That's what the high school does. We, we generally, after their report's over, if they want to stay, they stay, but generally they leave.
Yeah.
Do they give a, they give a report?
They do, they give a report.
I like that of kind of giving, I like that.
So would we be able to get whoever it is advisory support so that there, you know, it's, it's easy for them to prepare and, and present?
Yeah, so, so it's too bad Becca had to step out because she's one of the student government advisors. And so this year it'll be Becca and Carly Hurley. And they actually had elections this morning. They, there were speeches and elections and I'm not sure.
Oh, Susan froze.
Oh, you froze.
Just that she was ready to get the result.
Right at the punchline.
Do we know?
No, I don't have the results.
Oh.
It's been quite a battle, even though Cameron's moving on to ninth grade. She has not moved on from the eighth grade. We heard some of her friends gave a speech to her last night, was asking, she's had multiple kids asking her like, what was your running platform? And they're, they're really into it. And it was, it was exciting to see that, you know, even though they're not there, the, the kids are there. They like, they want to, like, they're involved and they're, you know, really into it.
Well, so, so I think, so, so what I was saying probably, I don't know if you heard this part when I froze or not, but, so Becca and Carly are the advisors and they can certainly, you know, meet with the, the officers, whether it's like the two or three eighth grade officers that would come together or that they would just plan what the, what the president would say or whether they would take turns. They can definitely have that support through, through the student government advisory part. And they've also, I think we've scheduled some student government time, which I believe will be in person in that like, you know, 1:45 to 2:45 block. So.
And so, so Bill, does that, when a kind of representative, do they sit on the board or do they sit in the audience?
No, they sit when we're physically there. They sit with the board. They have a nameplate and they give their report and then, and then depart generally.
Yeah. So I would advocate for that versus come and speak to, to the board. It's more part of the board informing.
It's a non-voting member.
Yeah. That's awesome. All right, thank you for bringing that up, Aaron. I think that's a great idea. All right, any further questions, discussions? Feeling good about where we're landed? I don't think we've ever landed in one city before, so.
Greg, you are efficient. Good stuff.
No, I don't know. I think we're, I think we're just better than we used to be. Used to be a lot more, a lot more to talk about that.
Yeah, so this used to take a half a day and then we'd come back for another weekend and.
Yeah.
This is way better. No, no, so Bill, it's better because of the work that you and your team, all the teachers are doing. Greg, your leadership as well, certainly. But it's, it's a different day. It's, it's kind of cool to see where we are now compared to four or five years ago.
It is, it very much is, so.
Thank you. And thank you, Susan. Thank you very much. It's great. Ayesha, welcome. Nice to have you here.
Thank you.
Be scaring her away, anybody.
Oh.
Oh, no. I come from a, I'm a writer. I'm not easily scared.
Good for you. Good for you.
Told you that the hazing was the fact that the, the budget is due to the SAU September 25th, so.
I heard you told her that on day one.
No, I think it was day three.
Oh, okay. That's much better. That's.
Everyone was nice to me on day one.
I see.
And then day two, right in the gray.
Very good. Okay, I, I will say then I'd take a motion to adjourn if there's no further discussion.
Motion to adjourn, adjourn. Our time. All I do is talk to little kids all day. My mind is like.
We're recording this, by the way.
I know.
One second. All right, seconds.
All right, who, who did the first? Who?
Aaron.
Aaron and Martin.
Thank you.
And I just saw them all vote to adjourn, so.
Did you get a miss?
I think it was, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you much. See you soon.
All right, thank you, everybody, taking the time. Bye-bye.